Welcome to this evening's special committee of the whole meeting. Scheduled to start at 5:30 and it is 5:35, so we'll get underway. We have only one item on our agenda tonight and because members of the public may not be as familiar with us meeting as committee of the whole, it's a little bit less formal. It's much more like our standing committee structure where we may have more active debate and may speak to an item more than once. And we don't officially have it on our agenda to have public participation, but the order of the events are that staff will present the reports that are included on the agenda and then I will allow an opportunity for the public to weigh in if they have something they would like us to consider in conjunction with the staff information or need some clarification, we will try to accomplish that. And then I will bring it back to the committee table with council sitting as committee of the whole to discuss the matter and make whatever recommendations committee feels is appropriate. So with that, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move.
All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you, and stop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address the format of the tables for a moment. This isn't us and them and this is the great divide. We were trying to find a way to emulate a roundtable discussion and make this a less formal discussion about committees without any expectation for a recommendation at the end because we haven't actually prepared a report for committee to consider. This was really a discussion item so that we can understand better what council's issues are related to standing committees and hopefully council can understand more about the staff issues around standing committees. And then, coming out of this meeting, staff will take all of what we've heard and put that into a staff report that will come to a future meeting where there'll be, hopefully, some direction on where we're going to go moving forward, whether it's to continue with standing committees with some caveats or whether it's to alter to some other form. So that was the intent of this layout, just so that we could have a little more loose and casual conversation. I started here eighteen months ago and one of the very first things I heard, I think the first day I started, was you have to do something about the committees. We've tried to get a meeting since November to have this discussion and I know all of you are angry at me specifically about the amount of committees that have been canceled recently. It's not deliberate and although it looks like it, it's just a matter of workload and priorities and inability for us to quite frankly come up with meaningful agenda items to put on those standing committee agendas. So our Director of Administration put together a fairly good discussion paper with the committee model and what we believed at the staff level were the advantages and disadvantages. And we believe that the best thing for us to do is just have a conversation about these issues and anything that we've missed on this list so that we can try and find a way to move forward.
Just to interrupt, Ian, do we have the public? Does the public... So there are... Thank you.
So I'm finished. I think we should just start the conversation.
If there's no further presentation from any of the staff, then I'll open it to the public. Is there any input that you would like to give us?
Judith Collington, thirty-three, thirty-eight, Ace Mate. Just for clarification, are you just looking for input on this first item, advantages and disadvantages, at this moment in time as opposed to the kind of potential structures that you get to later in the agenda package? I wasn't clear.
It's the whole ball of wax.
It's the whole ball of wax. Okay. Hi, Judith Collington, thirty-three, thirty-eight, Ace Mate. Just a comment, I love the backs of your heads, but I really love your faces even better. So I really do like when you're kind of sitting at the table and, you know, we can see staff as part of the whole team that works here, so, just a minor aside. My comment is really, and it's one that I've made before, is I think there is real value to the city in having a committee structure that also involves citizen representation. I've been a citizen member of committees over a number of years. I've been a council member of committees over a number of years. I was back in the day on the original APC when it happened and I know we're going back to that again. I really do think there is something to be said. I'm looking at many faces on the table who, folks who participated in committees before they kind of bravely stuck up their hand and said, yes, I'm willing to stand as a member of council, so as a training ground for new counselors, as a way of getting different views at the table. I think there's quite an interesting proposal in front of you in terms of this kind of two and two and in addition to the Advisory Planning Commission. I think, as always, there are possibilities, it's worth trying out. If it doesn't work, you can change it back again. My input, thank you.
Rick Marshan, thirty-five, oh eight, Aloha Avenue. I think I shared some of the frustration with the opening comment this evening and as somebody who's attempting to attend as many meetings as I can to get smart on the comings and goings of the council and its subgroups and subcommittees, there were an awful lot of canceled meetings over the last year. As I heard, there are reasons for this, but I think that whatever structure you come up with in terms of a standing committee structure, I think that we need to make best efforts of the staff's time, your time and our time as taxpayers, to make sure that those meetings are held when they are scheduled to be held. I don't think anybody is wanting to gild the lily here by forcing an agenda of fluff on people to discuss, but I think there's enough going on in the city boundaries right now that having meetings that are scheduled to deal with the issues of the day is important. And you can't just delay for months at a time a committee until you think you've got something on the agenda. I firmly believe that there's too much going on right now and that these meetings do have a place and a role and I think that in particular, the plan, PLUC, the Planning Land Utilization Committee amongst others, should be one that is standing and does not see itself canceled for sure. And there are a few other I can think about, but I don't want to dwell on that for right now. Thank you.
So this is what it feels like to be a quarterback. I've got all the heavyweights in front of me and we're ready to go. I only have one comment. First, I'm in favor of giving something a try for a year and seeing how it works, but I only have one comment. On page twelve of forty-one, also known as page two point one, there's a recommendation that the meetings be established with a 5:30 PM start. And if we're going to remove the standing committees, which have been traditionally an opportunity for members of the public to connect with the municipal government, the only opportunity for a lot of people is going to be by attending the expanded role of the committee of the whole. So for folks who work from eight to five downtown, there's no way to get here for 5:30. I'd like to recommend that seven PM start be considered because that's what's used for council meetings and that could well be convenient for people who want to be here. Thank you.
Not seeing any, I will bring it to committee of the whole. Counselor Naults.
Yes, along with a couple of the other counselors here, I've been around long enough to have experienced the committee of the whole. I have serious reservations about going that route because those meetings generally went till ten or eleven PM on a regular basis. It was hard on council, it was hard on staff, and if a member of the public was there to make a comment on something that was late in the agenda, they would often just get frustrated with the wait and leave. So if we are going to go to a committee of the whole, I suggest we do it in two meetings and have half of what standing committees would consider at one meeting and half at the other. It'll cut down the length of the meetings and it'll give the public a much better chance to have input. I have been rather frustrated with our current committee structure in that the number of canceled meetings, for one. For two, the committees are very inconsistent as to how much support the public members bring. I don't know if we can have a test before somebody gets on a committee, but that would be my comment about the current and past.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would echo Counselor Naults' comments regarding the committee of the whole. You know, I found them less than valuable at the time and the circumstances might have changed in today's world, but back in the day, that basically committee of the whole and council were the same meeting. And so, you know, we had the same issue regurgitated and the same arguments at both meetings and really, there wasn't a lot of value. And I think so moving towards the standing committee structure added that value and most importantly, the citizen representatives actually added a tremendous amount of value on each committee that I participated in. What I'm hearing tonight though, and you know, and I tend to agree that perhaps there isn't enough substance for each standing committee that we have currently to make it meaningful and I'm thinking of finance and admin as an example. We haven't had a lot of issues or a lot of items come to that committee, so we haven't had to have a committee meeting, but we have two citizen reps that, you know, haven't been as involved as perhaps, or valued perhaps, as they could be if we had a more concentrated standing committee structure. So, you know, it's been a long time since we moved to the standing committee, so I think it's worthwhile to have a refresh and look. And that's, you know, I had a hard look at the proposed new standing committee structure on page seven in our package and I think, you know, that's a good hybrid model. I think it still involves members of the public to provide input and over the weekend, I did some informal polling in terms of what do you want, what would you like to see? Do you want a committee of the whole? Do you want the current structure or do you want a hybrid? And the consensus was a hybrid. There was no desire to go back to a committee of the whole type of structure, but the citizen representatives, representation on the committee structure, in the committee structure was seen as adding value and adding a different voice and a different perspective that I know I've found particularly helpful during any committee. So those are my comments for now, but I certainly am supportive of the proposed new standing committee structure that's indicated on page seven of forty-one.
Thank you, Counselor Trace.
I also support the compromise structure involving citizen reps and all of council. I personally think it's important for all council to be privy to all of the discussions because I think they're... Sorry. They're more prepared to make a proper recommendation and I believe that we don't get a chance to have enough knowledge when it's, we can't go to all the meetings, there's just too many meetings. So if all members of council can have all items put before them, then we're all educated in the same way and we can all make those informed decisions. And with this compromise, you still have the citizens' reps or the citizens on the committees and at the same time, you can still have people speaking at the meetings. I mean, people still have their opportunity to speak towards whatever items on the agenda, so it's sort of a win-win. I think it reduces the staff time, it's going to save the municipality money, it's, it's just more advantages to having the committee of the whole to the regular standing committee structure that we have now. In my view, I think that there's just too many committees and this way, I think it's better structured, it saves time, it's, I know that there's the thought of the regurgitation from committee of the whole to council, but I've worked in both methods over the years as a staff member and I've always found, I've worked with committee of the whole, I've worked with the standing committees and I personally agree with you to some extent with that respect. But at the same time, I think there's a real importance for all members of council to be privy to all that information and hear all those arguments. Instead of coming to a council meeting with a recommendation in front of us and having to make a decision without having all the cards played in front of us, I think this is a really good compromise and I think it would be very functional. I think it's worth a try at least because we can always revert back to the standing committees if it doesn't work or go to the full committee of the whole structure if that's the choice, but I just think there's more disadvantages to the standard standing committee structure that we have now and I support this compromise.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton.
Just to clarify, clarification from Counselor Trace, are you more supportive of the model that Counselor Logan had put up or the full committee of the whole?
No, the in-between, the compromise between, not the committee of the whole, not standing committees, but the...
The blended hybrid model.
Yeah, hybrid. I don't know how it gets that name, but that's the one.
Yeah, no, and for me, you know, it's been about the amount of time staff has spent on getting things ready and then putting, pulling things apart and readying them up for council. It takes away from a lot of the time that they have to get some of those more vital projects and what have you organized. I've done the committee of the whole and I have to agree that it's somewhat confusing to the members of the public when you get into these long and hashed out events and then, you know, a week later, you're doing it all over again with little change. So that would take real careful monitoring at a council table to tighten up those discussions, but, you know, you don't want to feel as if you're censoring anything either, so there is a bit of a struggle with how that works. The, addressing the timeline, I really get it that by delaying the meetings until seven, that gives a better opportunity for public attendance for sure in what we do, but it also lengthens that gap between when staff are officially off work, you know, and then hanging around and often, you know, we've seen increases in overtime amounts and that sort of thing. So it makes it very difficult to manage their time if we're trying for efficiencies and better use of everybody's time. I like the hybrid model for a number of reasons because it still allows us to change out within that. It also provides for citizen involvement. Nothing ventured, nothing gained, so I'm certainly supportive of us, you know, picking a timeline to try, trial this through. I've seen different times, different dates in here, so I think that we need to maybe tighten that up a bit more. Deal with rehashing that I talked about. I think the benefit of sort of going to an expanded committee, standing committee one allows for better management of agendas and we're not likely to be canceling meetings under those circumstances. So I think that there's a lot to think about in here, but, you know, keeping opportunity for the public, keeping staff time efficient and keeping our time efficient as well has got to be all part of the solution.
Chong.
Great, thank you through the chair. So I'm in supportive of the hybrid. I think a few of the big benefits is, one, I do believe that would be easier for citizens, so they have one meeting and they're able to get information on multiple items, so I know some, that's one of their struggles. As hard as it is for us to attend all the meetings, it's also hard for them to attend all the meetings. Secondly, staff time. I know often when I go to staff and I ask about a parks item, for example, you know, they're also dealing with a whole bunch of things and often when I'm in meetings, so cycling advisory committee, for example, we would benefit from having more staff there. So we might not have the planner there, but we would greatly benefit from having the planner there as well as an engineer. Another thing I wanted to address is the start time. I do feel that 5:30 is a bit early, especially for the public and a lot of our, you know, residents do work downtown, so I think I would be in favor of starting, I know in here it says 5:30, there's another mention of six, but I would be in favor of six, maybe six-thirty. And along with that, also saving money on wages for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mark?
I guess I have more questions than anything else and I'll direct it to staff to answer this. How do you address the issue, if we were to go with the committee of the whole issue, how do we address the issue of somebody feeling passionate about something, arguing it at the committee of the whole and then the rest of council having to sit and listen to the exact same argument a week later because they want it on the record for a council meeting? And I'll tell you, I'm certainly not interested in rehashing or listening to the same argument a second time, like a week or two later. So how is staff planning on addressing that if we went to that issue?
Madam Chair, I'll start, but anyone from staff can jump in on this. I think the first thing I'd like to say is the committee of the whole model of fifteen years ago is not the committee of the whole model of today. So I just want to say that first because the committee of the holes fifteen years ago were very much thought of as dress rehearsals. So they were doing exactly what you guys don't want to see, which is an entire agenda that then just went to a council meeting and everything got rubber stamped and it was all the same issues and in some cases, somebody who may not agree would see it as another opportunity to filibuster some more, to delay an ultimate decision. That happens now to a certain degree at council meetings every time a bylaw comes forward. So it's impossible to stop and it depends on whether it is, if it's on the committee of the whole, if it's a committee of the whole in this current model that's being proposed, it means it was a complex issue. And it's an issue that likely didn't go to a vote at a committee of the whole. In other words, the committee of the whole is not meant to be a shadow council or a dress rehearsal, it's meant to be a place to have more in-depth debates about very challenging, complex issues that can't be appropriately addressed efficiently in the constraints of a council meeting. And that may actually be in the form of a seminar session where staff are doing a session on legal or whatever, it could be any number of things, but it's very, it's intended to be to deal with complex issues. So if there was a committee of the whole structure in place, staff would do their best effort to try and determine, is it complex, that it can't be efficiently addressed through a council meeting, then it would go on a committee of the whole. And if we miss that and we thought it was simple and when it hit the council table, it became very apparent that it was a more complex issue, then council would refer that to the committee of the whole to have that discussion. It's not intended to be, we move and then it goes to the council meeting, so the council just goes like this later on. It's, well, what we learned at that committee of the whole meeting has helped us now formulate our decision-making process and now we're going to talk about how we're going to make that decision. That's the intent of the way it's being proposed and that's, I'd say, from an academic perspective, the new contemporary direction around committees. So if you extend that to the standing committee model, because it really applies to all committee structures now, you don't take absolutely everything that's supposed to go to a council meeting to a committee first, which is what our existing rules say that were established in 2003. It says every single item must hit a committee meeting before it goes to council. Well, that doesn't encourage nimble government. That creates a very cumbersome government that may take months to process something that could be processed in two weeks. So that's part of what we're trying to address because we don't have the time or the luxury of time particularly right now with the volume of development that does affect every single department in this organization. So we're trying to keep up with the development demands, resolve some longstanding policy deficiencies and try and serve council the best that we can and the community. So we're trying to come up with these alternatives and in doing our research, the biggest one is eliminating, what I'm going to say, the simpler issues that can be quickly dispatched by council. And those are the ones, regardless of what process we go to, we'd like to get off of the agendas of whatever committees we pick at the end of this meeting or subsequent meetings where we actually draw some conclusions on the direction you want to go. So that'll solve some of those issues so that we're not doing dress rehearsals. In other words, the stuff that's relatively straightforward or can't be delegated, in other words, it's only to the decision of council, we would take directly, or if it was time-sensitive, like right now, we've got time-sensitive issues and if I was to follow the policy to a T, we wouldn't make those time deadlines because that's what the policy says. And so moving forward, we're hoping that we can get direction when we're finished this process to only put complex issues on agendas or policy development. So for instance, if we're doing a DCC bylaw, the DCC bylaw would go to a committee, whatever committee that would be. I just want to address a couple of other things if you don't mind, is that okay? Regarding the citizen reps, and I know I'm making a very controversial statement and I'm doing it on purpose, I believe that the current structure we're doing today is somewhat a travesty of democracy. And I say that because we give a very, very small privileged few, members of the public, the opportunity to represent the public. And the only people that the community have elected to represent them are the seven of you. And then we've expanded that to non-elected officials to have that same privilege. And I don't know if the public are necessarily best represented by people who they have not elected. So there's better ways to get public input and public participation and one of them is having a committee structure that encourages and welcomes more public input at the beginning. So for instance, if this was a committee of the whole and there was agenda items on here, you'd expand the public input from the people in the audience, not from people who have been selected by council to sit at the table. The other way we can address this is through select committees, which are considerably more flexible for council. And select committees are created by council like a task force to specifically deal with a very specific issue, so there's a sunset to whatever they're doing. But the beauty of select committees is you can have one counselor and you can have twenty members of the public if you wish, which is certainly, doesn't address the fact that you've only picked twenty out of sixteen thousand, but it's certainly better than two that you have right now. So there is, there's ways that we can, I think personally, that we can better address public participation and public input than what we're doing today and I strongly believe that we're not doing a good service to the public by only having two members of the public on that committees. And that's not a slight against the members of the public, it's the limitations that the community charter put on us on standing committees. I just don't think it's a good functioning model because it's never been updated in, you know, fifty years or whatever it is that the standing committee structure has been. in, you know, 50 years or whatever it is that the standing committee structure has been in place.
Can I just pause for, for one second there? Because I'd like to address something that you said. You said that our current procedures bylaw requires that all items will have been, gone through a standing committee. And it actually says most council meeting agenda matters should have been first reviewed by a standing committee. So that's not all, that's most. And the idea, and I was here when these, these were adopted, was to avoid the rush items being placed on the agenda without adequate standing committee review beforehand. So I guess my question is, you're advocating for a different system to streamline our process. So my concern is how are we ensuring that the public can come to City Hall and hear what's going on in Callwood and get a, a full picture? Because many people come to this chamber for one or two items of concern to them. And they sometimes stay for the other items that are on the agenda. And then they start to get a feel for what is actually going on. And then they, you know, they, one thing leads to another, they take an interest, they, they become more involved. My concern with your streamlining is that potentially the things that you or I or people at this table tend to start thinking of as the everyday business of Callwood is not obvious and apparent or easily participated in by the public.
Well, I think, sorry, Madam Chair, I, I'm trying to formulate how to state this, but I think that the business of this community is dealt with by council. And I think fundamentally, the most important agenda that's produced by this organization is the council agenda. And the one first and foremost that the public should look to to find out what's going on. And to have five or six agendas to weed, weed through or wade through, I think exposes us to significantly higher risk of issues slipping past members of the public without them being aware of it. I suppose that there may be issues on an agenda at a council meeting that we've all concluded might be a simple issue that the public may not think it is. And that's why we continue to have opportunities for the public on a council meeting agenda to speak to them. So if there is an issue and that is far more complex than we have ever imagined, and it's on a council agenda, members of the public have an opportunity to address council at the beginning of that meeting to raise issues that we've never thought about. And that's a classic opportunity for council when they reach that item on the agenda to refer it to a committee of the whole meeting or to whatever committee structure. Because this, the, what I'm proposing to change how things get on the agenda would apply, could apply to any committee structure, whatever that is, whether it's a committee of the whole or a hybrid or existing standing committee. It's just changing in the, the way we think about what gets on the agenda. Because I, I see that now that it does say most, but I can tell you from a staff perspective, that's an impossible, subjective decision that we cannot make. I've been making that decision and it's not been something that you've been happy with. So the default is, it's either everything goes on because we don't know what is, what most means, or we further define what should go on an agenda or not. And I'm proposing that it's complex issues that go on agendas to committees. Complex, complex issues which includes policy development.
Councilor Martin.
Thank you. To follow up on some of my other questions, but I, I want to focus back on a comment that you made regarding citizen reps and basically having, basically being empowered, even though they're non-elected. And you, you expressed some very strong feelings about that. And my concern is if we go to this hybrid example, that actually exasperates what you're talking about rather than helps it address. Because what you do is you limit it down to three to six citizen reps, which are even more empowered, who have even more power within, within the city that are non-elected. So I think there's a fundamental philosophical decision that this council's going to need to make a decision on of, do we agree with our CAO that, that the citizen reps are non-elected individuals who have been empowered and not been chosen by the public to be, have that power? Or do we disagree and think that it's a value? And, and I think that's a very significant decision that we're going to have to make. Because I, I mean, I don't think you, we can, I think people see this hybrid as sort of a compromise between the two. And, and I don't actually think it is. I don't think we can come with this philosophy that, that this hybrid is a, is a, a middle ground. It, it certainly is not a middle ground, at least in my opinion. And I, obviously, I'm just representing my own opinions. Can you please address Jason's, excuse me, Councilor Nolt's question regarding the problem with the committee of the whole issues in past have been public have shown up, and then they've had to sit through hours until their agenda, agenda item? And even if we move to the hybrid issue, it seems like that issue can still exist in there that we're going to be exasperating a frustrated public because they're going to be sitting through a three-hour meeting and their, their agenda item doesn't show up until 2:45. And then I have a, you know what, let me throw the last question at you too, and then I'll, I'll be done. If we went with the hybrid as well, I'm trying to understand, how does this hybrid, and even actually if going with the standing committee, we have not met as standing committees for a significant period of time. And I just don't know, if we switch, where does the work suddenly appear that it hasn't been appearing? Like, I mean, we're, we're, we haven't met, which suggests, you know, we're not focusing on policy, we're not doing the things that we thought. By changing the structure, I don't see how the work suddenly appears. Either the work has been there and we haven't done it, or the work isn't there. And so why are we looking at changing the structure? So I guess I'm trying to understand, how does this generate the philosophical work that the standing committees were not generating?
I'll deal with the easy one first. The long agendas, if, if we went to, so again, going back to the old model of committee of the holes, almost everything that you would see on a council agenda would be on a committee of the whole agenda. And there would, it literally became a dress rehearsal. And then you'd get to the council meeting and all you'd see was committee recommendation to do this, this, and this. And it was, you know, to an extreme, you'd see council meetings that would last 15 minutes because they'd spend three hours in a committee of the whole, and then they'd go into a council meeting and it was literally, and, okay, adjourned. And that's, that's what you're trying to, I think, trying to avoid by potentially going back to that model. If you can try and think about all of those, what, I'm going to say routine, and I understand there's some risk to saying routine issues, but there's a lot of stuff that can go directly to council. And if those aren't hitting the committee, there may only be one, two, three items on a committee of the whole meeting. There might be one issue on a committee of the whole meeting that's just simply so complex that it's going to take up the entire agenda. Or it might even take up three or four committee of the whole agendas before it can actually get resolved at a future council meeting. And that's, that's really what I believe is the future of committee meetings. I'm not going to get into what type, but committee meetings in, in local governments. And certainly, the recommendations that are coming out of George Cuff is that you get away from these dress rehearsals, get away from making recommendations at those committee meetings, and just have a discussion so that you're better informed when you go to the council meeting. And that's really where I think a committee of the whole should, should be going. So that we're, we get back to the business of council being addressed at the business, at, at a council meeting. And those complex issues are, are those issues that can't be addressed in the, in a reasonable time period that require in-depth discussion, debate, or just maybe just learning, might just be a seminar session, which a lot of municipalities were thinking seminar sessions were not open to the public. I disagree. I think if they're leading to a decision, they have to be a committee of the whole. And if you have to learn about that issue, so does the member of the public. So they can understand why you made the decision you made. So it's fundamentally important that those seminar sessions become part of a committee of the whole structure so that everybody's learning, including members of the public. I forgot what your second question was.
Councilor Nolt?
Yes, further to the comments about the citizen reps. I do tend to agree with the chief administrative officer that the citizen reps are empowered. My biggest problem with that has always been that it's the mayor that does the appointing of both the citizen reps and the members of the standing committee, which to me puts an awful lot of power in the hand of the mayor. I've seen four, I've worked with four different mayors and seen it done four different ways and not always to my satisfaction as to who gets on which committee. So I guess what I am doing then is speaking in favor of committee of the whole because that puts all of council, all of the elected representatives in the same room at the same time. Each one gets a vote, the mayor gets one vote. As far as the length of the meetings go, perhaps we could rework the terms of reference of what goes to committee of the whole and what doesn't. And as I suggested earlier, if we split it into two committee of the whole meetings a month and split various departments between them, it should make for A, a much more streamlined meeting, and B, the public won't have to wait around for their item to, if it's number seven on the list, it'll be number three if they're split in half. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Logan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we went to a hybrid model, what would stop us from having a committee of the whole meeting to deal with some of those complex issues like, like we've done in the past? Budget is a prime example. And, and this one.
I'm, I'm confused about what the standing committee components would be doing. If, if we're, if we had a committee of the whole to address complex issues, what would the standing committees be doing? I guess is my question. And that was one of the, I think, wherever we go at the end of this process, if council resolves to continue with the standing committees, we'd still have to have this discussion. What are the standing committees going to do? And I, and so I guess we're starting that conversation early because I'm really confused about their intent. And I think we need clarity on what the intent of those standing committees are.
Well, you know, from my perspective, and, and I absolutely agree that perhaps the, the current model does an injustice to, to what the original intent was, was to, yeah, I, I would say empower the, our residents. Because that's one thing that we've always held dear is that we encourage our, our residents to come and participate in the process, be involved in the process, to have more of an inclusive process as opposed to authoritarian type of dictatorship process. And not, you know, notwithstanding that the citizen reps aren't elected, but certainly there's an application process and they're vetted and, and then they, they are included. So what, you know, I, I think they, I think the citizens add value, certainly, and have, we've seen better results, better decision-making, I think, at the committee level. And I, you know, I would say too that perhaps it's not indicative of this council or previous council, but sometimes decisions can become politically charged. And sometimes the citizen reps can take that, the politics out of, out of that decision. And, and you might have more of a rational decision as opposed to a politically motivated decision at the end of the day. Because that was my experience in the past, in, specifically the committee of the whole process. It was a politically, decisions were made for political reasons, not necessarily the right decision, but you had the citizen component to it and it tended to, to level things out. Now, I'm not saying that, that there shouldn't be some guidelines that come with perhaps a new hybrid model, because I, I would tend to agree, you know, we don't want, you know, maybe there are some things that are more appropriate to go to, to council, but certainly I, I don't think shutting the public and the residents out of participating at this table is, is, is something that, that I can agree with personally. And it's kind of, goes against what, what certainly I have stood for in the, in the past. You know, and I, I absolutely understand where staff's coming from, but I also reflect in, on who we actually served as well. And, and I think that's an important aspect. And they've told us that they want to be involved as well. And I think we need to foster that involvement, so.
Mayor Hamilton?
Thank you. What I liked in, in some of the comments have, have come up around the table is the idea, if we're going to go to committee of the whole, if we identified in those two Mondays, certain department issues are going to come up on Monday X and other issues on Monday Y. Still wanting to look for staff efficiencies and timelines and that sort of thing. Wondering if we possibly could take maybe a page out of CRD where people wanting to speak to items on the agenda and would be, we'd have to figure out how that would work. But if we had a draft agenda that went out, public would have 24 hours or whatever it is to weigh in and, of their item of interest, make a submission booking to a placeholder, and then the final agenda would come out. So perhaps we could still do a six o'clock start. But if we had people just speaking to heavier items, those would be like in the later part of the, the meeting, you know, after seven, it would still allow for some of those other topics to, you know, run a first hour of discussion. And they still would have the opportunity at a council meeting if they missed, you know, by, by a bit in there that they could still put and be part of a public participation schedule. I'm just trying to pull the bits and pieces and the best of all in what we've done because it's easy to find the things that didn't work. It's, the harder part is trying to find the ones that will work and taking a chance on those and bringing them forward.
Thank you. I do have Councilor Trace, but I just wanted to quickly add, just to illustrate your point. For many years, we've had planning and land use items come forward where perhaps the proponent wasn't quite there yet, or we saw that there was a majority of people in the audience for a particular item. We recognize, you know, what part of the city they're from. We might reorder an agenda to facilitate the community involvement. So I just wanted to throw that in there with what the mayor had mentioned.
This is a follow-up from Councilor Logan. With respect to whichever alternative route we go here, whether it's the committee of the whole, the hybrid model, or the standard, standard, standing committees that we have now, we still can call a special committee of the whole meeting to deal with separate items, correct?
Certainly, it's council's discretion to do whatever they like. I, I just don't know if there's a, if it's really necessary. Like if we were, if we were to follow the existing committee structure to a T right now, we'd probably be sitting in a finance and administration committee having this discussion. And the finance and administration committee would at high risk, I think, go down a path that would not be potentially... that would not be potentially palatable for the balance of council, which is why we went to this very informal process for this particular topic. But I think, I think if we continue on the standing committees, we should stick to the standing committees, and not have committee of the whole and standing committees. And if they're really big issues, then councillors should endeavor to attend that standing committee issue, because it's a big issue, and you'll need to know about it when it hits the council table.
Seeing any speakers? Okay.
If we looked at hybrid, can you explain why did you decide on six? Because I know there's seven with the mayor, but it just says the mayor may attend. So really, my experience has been usually, you know, the mayor's, I don't know if the plan is that the mayor is supposed to attend all these committee meetings, and that would be the standard, because, I mean, normally the mayor won't attend a standing committee. So if we went to this hybrid, and the mayor didn't attend, that would seem to me like we would end up with a three-three tie a lot, possibly. And then those, the committee never moves forward with a recommendation.
Through you, Madam Chair. With respect to that, though, our standing committee is only two citizens and two members of council as well. Normally, we only have four there, so there always is that risk of the issue of a tie. The mayor is the ex officio member of all committees. It doesn't matter whether they're standing select committees or anything, the mayor has that authority and can attend all of them, and can participate and vote in all of them. But the, I forgot what you just said, what I was going to respond to.
Whether she was expected to attend all of them?
She's not expected to attend all of them. Oh, I'm sorry. And on the proposal, if we were to go to two standing committees, where we just do a better blend of the business that each one takes care of, that's just a number that we chose, just as an example of, you know, we can make it a little bit bigger, we can have three citizens, we can have three councillors, but we have to be very careful about the number of councillors we have, because if you have all your council there, is it a council meeting? You can't. You know, if you have seven members of council, you can have up to seven members of the public. So where are we going to find the balance of how many people is too many people, how many people is not enough people? So it really was something we just picked out of the air, but also trying to respect the fact that we don't want it to appear like it's a council meeting if it's a committee meeting.
Can I just follow up on that? How is that addressed with committee of the whole? Because that was the difficulty that was often observed, at least by me, before I was on council, in the audience, was it took a seasoned council watcher to tell you, oh, they're not really doing anything tonight, it's committee of the whole, you know, that's next week. So, you know, in a committee of the whole structure, potentially you have every member of council sitting there. How is that not construed as council then?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think really it's a procedural thing, then. I think the city would be wise to have some kind of a statement at the beginning of a committee of the whole meeting, much as we do for a public hearing, where all of council is sitting at the table, but they're not sitting there as council, they're sitting there to hold a public hearing. And I think we could introduce a statement at the beginning of committee of the whole meetings that allow the public to, or help the public understand, you're sitting as a committee to have that better discussion, the more in-depth debate or communications or discussions with the public. The public can still speak to agenda items, so very much more so than what we allow at a council meeting, which, as you know, is much more formal, and they only get to speak at public participation. Committee of the whole is not the same. So I think the statement, perhaps our signage on the doors, explaining that this is a committee meeting of council, not council sitting formally.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, further to that, the chair of committee of the whole is not the mayor, which also sends a pretty strong signal, hey, this is not a council meeting, the mayor's sitting over there tonight, so that helps. And I believe that if we go to a committee of the whole structure, we should have a considerably more open means for community engagement with the audience, not specifically with a member who's been appointed, but the actual rank and file that are just coming into a council or a committee meeting because they have an interest in that particular issue. So I think it's a venue that can be more engaging with the public, to get more public input on a particular issue. So it is, it does have to be structured very differently in terms of the way the agenda is struck and the way it's communicated.
Thank you. Counselor Martin.
If we went with the hybrid, or actually committee of the whole, can you tell me where does, sorry, I'm on page eight of 41, can you tell me where does cycling, Yakdi, Pay It Forward, School District Liaison Committee, and I'm also thinking ELSI, where do these things go? I mean, I guess ELSI isn't officially a city thing, is it? So where would the rest of these things go?
Madam Chair, that would be a decision of council, actually. So one of the things that we could be looking at, if we were to change from six standing committees to two standing committees, for example, one of them could be very much the parks, public work side of parks, engineering, transportation, cycling could become part of that committee. Or council may decide that they believe that the cycling advisory committee is a very valuable standalone select committee. It's got a number of members from various organizations, as well as citizens, and as well as members of the council. So it's really for council to decide. Council form the select committee. Normally, when you have a select committee, though, it has some kind of an end date, so maybe you don't want to call it a select committee. There might be another way for us to not blend it into the bigger picture and keep it separate. It really is a decision for council to make, though. It's similar to intermunicipal advisory committee on disability issues. So there's a number of municipalities who are members, and so we appoint a council member, it's the other municipalities appoint their representatives. There's representatives from numerous agencies throughout Victoria, but the membership or members of the public who want to come are free to come and go as they please. But that committee is a standalone one, because it's just too complex with too many municipalities involved for us to try to blend it into a standing committee.
Counselor Chong.
Thank you, through the Chair. Just another reason why I support the committee of the whole, I have heard this from several citizen reps from multiple committees, is that they feel that they, on some issues, are not as informed as councillors or even other citizens in the public, and that's because they feel that they don't have the same relationship with staff, or they don't know the right venue to get the information. And so quite often, they feel uncomfortable making decisions. So this is another reason why I support having council members at the table. Not that I don't support, you know, having the empowered citizens, but often it's stressful for them, and that's because they don't have the same relationship, they don't know where to go for information, and it can be quite uncomfortable for them.
Yeah, I would echo that concern, and that certainly, probably the committee that I've seen have the greatest difficulty, from my perspective, is the finance and administration, which when originally conceived the budget, would go to finance and administration. And then, you know, it was the committee members, the citizen members themselves, who sat there and said, you know, we really can't tell you guys what you should do in terms of the tax lift, or the not the tax lift, or, you know, that is a political decision. And, you know, we could, you know, make a recommendation that supports the two people, two members of council, who are, in fact, I was in that position, where the citizens supported two members of council's view of the budget. But then we are a minority bringing forward a recommendation to a council table that hasn't been privy to that discussion. So I, like Counselor Chong, really value open, transparent government. I want to empower people to be more involved, and for it to be less scary to come to the podium and say what you think about things. But at the same time, I don't want to not take on the full responsibility that I have as an elected official by, you know, pushing that onto somebody else. Well, you know, these citizens thought that was a good idea, so therefore, you know, I'm supported, and I'm fine, and I don't have to be accountable to anyone else for that decision. So my preference in looking at our potential options, with probably some tweaks, is to go to a committee of the whole structure, similar to the proposed hybrid system, where, you know, maybe on the first Monday, we deal with this group of topics, and maybe on the third Monday, we deal with this group of topics. Because that kind of reflects what I was thinking would be a way to achieve some fiscal restraint for committees, by having, you know, grouping several committees together, so that, you know, you could have, it makes a lot of sense for the cycling advisory committee to understand how people with disabilities need to use the sidewalks and the crosswalks, and it makes a lot of sense for transportation and public infrastructure committee to also understand what the cycling and all the different user groups are able to add their voice to the conversation, and feel comfortable in doing so. It can be very intimidating to stand up at that microphone. So sometimes being in that committee room is a wonderful thing, because you could just sit around the table, and you can look at the maps, and you can say, you know, here are my concerns. So I think there is probably some groupings that make sense. And one example of where a standing committee has worked really well was the protective services committee recently received a rather large delegation from a neighborhood who was concerned with traffic issues and policing issues, and brought that to the attention at the committee level, where the chief inspector is there, bylaw is there, you know, minutes are capped, the community is, has a venue where they can bring their issue and their concern forward, and have a bit of back and forth, and have a bit of discussion, and it doesn't just have to be, you know, burning brands and pitchforks to get their point across. So, and that's kind of how I think committee of the whole was seen before differently. I think we have an opportunity to do committee of the whole differently. So I'll leave it at that. Well, before, just before we get there, I would like to ask the indulgence of the members of committee of the whole here, and I'd like to just offer the public one last chance. They've heard a lot of different things from us, if they wanted to add a last word before we wind it up.
It actually relates to public engagement, and I'm hoping that council heard today that it's not our intent to reduce it. We're actually trying to significantly expand on public engagement by including more members of the public in helping council formulate thoughts, particularly around the more complex issues, and in most cases, the more complex issues also tend to be the more controversial issues. So it's not staff's intent, I just want to reinforce that, it's not staff's intent to reduce public engagement. In fact, since I got here, I've heard abundantly from this council, public engagement is important, and you want better public engagement, and we talk regularly at the staff level about how we can help council engage the public greater, and certainly the work that our manager of communications has been doing has been exceptional in getting the word out. And this is all part and parcel of trying to expand on that. So I just wanted to make that abundantly clear, that it's not our intent to reduce engagement, in fact, it's to expand on it, just in a different format, that's all.
Thank you. I'll go to the public.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is the first meeting I've been to where we've had an opportunity at the end to actually come back, because as you know, normally the public's given the opportunity for the first five minutes of any committee meeting to make a statement, but it's usually during the dialogue and the discussion that's taking place, where the real meat, or the rubber hits the road, so to speak. And it's at that point where we, I think, personally, that's where my frustration comes from, I'm not allowed to enter into that dialogue. I'd like to go back to a couple points that were made tonight. Hybrid model, whether you elect to go that way or not, whether you want to have citizenry on the hybrid model or not, whether they're voting or not. I think if you're going to have a committee of the whole meeting where citizenry is going to be involved, I don't think it's as important whether they vote or they don't vote, but having two or three people sitting at the table with an opportunity to interject into the conversation as is occurring, to support what's being discussed at the table, I think is invaluable. Because my experience has been, back here, I've been sitting on my hands, or chewing my tongue, because I know it's not my place to stand up and say anything. I've had my opportunity during the first five minutes of the meeting. I think if a hybrid model is one that you want to elect, if citizenry is going to be involved in standing committees or not, it's up to you to decide whether they vote or don't vote, but I think having them at the table would be value-added. That's my personal opinion. Because now you've got an opportunity to have citizenry being engaged, and not sitting in the back waiting to see how it's going to turn out. Thank you for the opportunity at the end of the meeting.
You're welcome.
We won't do that again.
We've had a quarter of one.
Doug Willoughby, I have to echo Richard's opinion on that. I think you have to have two or three people sitting around that forum there to be able to offer comment. Whether they vote or not, that's irrelevant, but they have to be able to interject thoughts at the time.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, my lady. To me, to be perfectly honest, it doesn't matter as to what format you choose, as long as you give the public an opportunity to say a few words at the beginning or during the meeting, that's fine by me. My personal experience has been that if I go to a meeting and I have something that just doesn't set right with me afterwards, I've definitely appreciated the accessibility in this city of every member of this council and the mayor. And whether you have a member of the public on a committee or not, I still feel I have plenty of avenues to access local government. So I guess, one, thank you for offering that, and it's certainly valued as a citizen. Thank you.
Last but not least.
I'm still confused. And the reason I'm confused is I've heard a lot of discussion going around the table.
We need you closer to the mic.
Move me close to the mic. And I've heard a lot of stuff which seems to be contradictory. So we've talked about, you know, the fear of giving too much power to citizen reps, but at the same time, we're just in the process of appointing an advisory planning committee, which gives a lot of power to citizen reps, so I'm kind of trying to weigh those two against. And I also heard confusion around, and I, you know, and I get the sense of kind of, you know, straightforward topics going straight to council and not through committee, but then I also heard that that's a complicated process to figure out which is, which are the simple ones and which are the complicated ones. So again, I'm kind of confused on that. And I'm also confused on, you know, we're trying to do more citizen engagement, but we know that what happens when you have citizen reps is they tend to kind of get into their subject a bit, and spend a bit more time doing the kind of background and getting to understand the issues that the city is facing. So I come back around to there is value in having those folks, in addition to a very good conversation with the audience, who are going to tend to come on a particular issue that twerks them. issue that twerks them for whatever reason. So, and I think I heard you go around the table in terms of, you know, we want to do a hybrid model that involves this, or we want to go back to a more committee of the whole. So I'm very curious to know what you're all going to come out with and I look forward to finding that. Good luck making your decision.
Thank you. I will bring it back. Any last comments around the table that you would like, things that you would like staff to be aware of as they're trying to formulate this report that will be coming forward? Councilor Martin.
I guess I've just been asking questions all day, but I'm going to ask another question to staff. I mean, do you guys have enough information to actually do a report? I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not clear on where this committee sits. So it's, I mean, I don't know if we can be, I was being a little facetious when I said we're done because I don't know if, do you guys have enough?
We're just looking at each other thinking.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think one of the biggest questions to put from staff to council is really what is council's preference? Does council want citizens at the table? Or does council want to return to the committee of the whole and allow their citizen input and engagement through participation, through discussion on every agenda item presented at committee of the whole? So it's really hard for staff to say. We were just trying to find different ways to meet the different feedback we were getting from members of council individually. Some felt like they were very strongly supportive of committee of the whole. Some have experienced it, some have not. Others are very supportive of keeping our citizen representatives. So the bigger picture is if we went to committee of the whole, we have our public engagement through our discussions in the meeting until the item is at the table for the members to finally discuss and make recommendations for council or referrals back to staff or perhaps the creation of a task force or a select committee, another decision of the council. So I really think it's in your court with respect to keeping the citizens on the panel or doing more to keep the citizens involved, finding more ways to give them opportunities to provide input and feedback and ensuring at our meetings that we're allowing them to feel that they had enough discussion in the meeting. They often will speak at the beginning of a meeting, then council will have their discussion, sorry, council sitting as a committee. And then perhaps council as a committee then offers them one more opportunity like we just did now, before council comes to its own decision about where we go from there. So I really think it's in council's hands in order for us to know where to move forward. And please keep in mind that you can always form a task force or a select committee. If there's an item that's coming up that we really feel we need to reach out to our community, we can form a task force. We can look for members of our public to serve on that task force and work with our communications manager to do whatever work is needed. And when they're finished, it dissolves and the work is reported through committee and council.
Yeah, I think, I see Councilor Knoll next, but I think there is within the basically three different scenarios, one being the way we do it now, two being committee of the whole, the way we once upon a time did it, and three being a hybrid of those. Those could all be managed differently depending on the, how council sets the tone in terms of if there's, you know, a big item that's going to monopolize the agenda and maybe even monopolize the agenda for a while, as it has done occasionally in the past, where, you know, members of the public would come night after night after night speaking about the same issues, then that is maybe an indication for a different process that involves seeking input from the public and really putting everything on the table. I'll yield the floor to Councilor Knoll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what I have taken away from this tonight is that I would like personally to see us go back to committee of the whole. What we did tonight was very valuable where we had the public present and then gave them another chance. Too often, I've seen standing committee meetings where the public is sitting there like this and the agenda says, you get your five minutes at the start and that's it. If we do it this way, where we go to the public, go to the committee of the whole, and then before we make a recommendation, get the public to have one more chance to kick at it. To me, that's the best of both worlds. You're getting full public participation. You're not getting a select few. Anybody that's out there has the opportunity to speak. And I think it would be a very engaging process for the public. What we would really need to see, should a new bylaw for this come forward, is clarity on which agenda items get put on committee of the whole and which go straight to council. I think we would all feel much more comfortable if that was defined very clearly. Having said that, I don't know if we're bringing a motion through here, but my preference would be to have staff prepare a report on how we would make committee of the whole work with those two suggestions.
Thank you. Mayor Hamilton.
Well, just an add in to what Councilor Knoll has said in there is then, you know, to follow up on reporting, if items come before committee of the whole on the first Monday, and maybe our Monday is our best day to be doing committee of the whole, just because we are stat holidays that impact Mondays, would drop it to Tuesdays, I would assume, just as we manage our council meetings. But in any case, if we had the first Monday with department XXX issues before us, would they be coming to the next week's council meeting? Or would it be a better process to have week one Monday reporting to the last, like the second council meeting and then the first council meeting reporting or getting, catching up? So it's like offset by a bit. So if there's anything that's in there, then we've got a bit more time. Rather than for staff, it always seems that you're jumping from, you know, a heavy agenda and meeting and minutes and information and pulling all that stuff back together again for council and decisions.
The Director of Administration looks like she has something to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The intention would be to, if we had a committee of the whole meeting on the first Monday, the intention would be to do our minutes and have the recommendations before council on the second Monday, the first meeting, council meeting of the month. We don't anticipate that being a difficult turnaround town. One of the challenges we have right now is a lot of our meetings are actually held on a Monday and a Tuesday and a Wednesday. And we're trying to transcribe those minutes, create our minute excerpts and produce agendas for council that go out on Thursday for the week following. So I believe that having the meeting on a Monday, or even if it's postponed to a Tuesday because of a stat holiday, is still very doable. If it is a meeting that's very long and very contentious, there are sometimes items that have no timeline or there's no reason to rush. So we may focus on the items that we can complete in transcribing the minutes to get them to the next council meeting. And another item that isn't quite as, quite as much of a hurry can wait until the next council meeting. But the goal would always be, if we had this meeting, let's try to get it to the week following at the council meeting. There just may sometimes be a, not be able to do it.
Thank you. Others? Any comments to add? All right. I think that we have provided as much feedback as we, Councilor Martin.
Sorry, and I don't mean to disagree with you, Chair, but I don't think we have. I don't think, I mean, we've heard Jason say that he's supportive of, excuse me, Councilor Knoll, sorry, I don't mean to keep doing that to you. We've heard that he's supportive of committee of the whole. I'm guessing what everybody else is, but I shouldn't be guessing. And if I'm guessing, it means staff are guessing. And so staff don't know which direction to go. They don't know if to go to the hybrid or to committee of the whole and build a recommendation around either. So I, I mean, I don't think we can leave yet until we make a decision. That's in my opinion, but.
So just, I did hear a couple of other people speak to committee of the whole. Councilor Chong, I believe prefaced her comments by saying she felt good about committee of the whole. I don't want, wish to speak for you, this is what I heard.
Thank you too, Chair. Just a few extra comments. So I am in favor of committee of the whole. What I do worry about though, and what I'm looking for clarification, is committee of the whole only going to be on the first Monday. What I do like about the hybrid model is that it's split into two. And for two reasons, I like splitting it into two. And I would be in favor of being committee of the whole split into two with it being, you know, here it says, you know, finance, admin together, then you have the parks and public infrastructure grouped together. I think that would work, one for time, you know, and fatiguedness on staff's part, citizens, council. And also, I really do like that we gave the public a chance to speak at the end. And I think by splitting the meetings, splitting committee of the whole into two Mondays, we give more time for citizens at the end to say their last comments on topics. Thanks.
Councilor Trace.
I'm in total agreement with Councilor Chong. I think that would be the best route to go.
Director of Administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies, I should have clarified when I was chatting just a few minutes ago about the committee of the whole structure as well. The intent was to have two committee of the whole. We could have one and then the third Monday of every month is always held in case a special committee of the whole meeting is needed. But if we were to look at this hybrid of the standing committee and just change it to say the hybrid of a committee of the whole structure, it would be the first and third Mondays are committee of the whole, the second and fourth Mondays are council. And what's to be determined then is just the best grouping of the individual departments and select committees or anything else that we decide to blend for each night. Because there really is quite a balancing act between, you know, really heavy committee workloads as opposed to some that are really quite reduced, especially FAC, for example. When it's budget season, there's no opportunity to have any kind of business prepared for finance meetings, as well as we take finance meeting night for budget. So it's just going to be a real balancing act. But this hybrid could be standing committees or council. The only difference is your voting membership in here at committee of the whole are all council members.
Thank you. And now the CAO.
Chair, I, I would suggest that the one scheduled, regularly scheduled committee of the whole would be the first meeting of the month and the third would be reserved for special committee of the whole meetings. And I say that because I'm still concerned and cautious about putting an imbalance in the ability for staff to respond to the policy side of the organization. So what I'm getting at is we've somewhat proven to your dissatisfaction that we have not been able to keep up with the policy side of the organization. We just can't do it with the workload that we have. So we either build a larger staff, which I'm absolutely not recommending, or we reduce the policy side to create a better balance on the scale. By having one committee of the whole scheduled, I believe there's a considerably less risk that there'll be a cancelled scheduled meeting. And if there's a need for additional committee of the whole meetings, they'll be identified either in the first committee of the whole meeting where you can't conclude your business or at a subsequent council meeting where councils stated that they need a second committee of the whole meeting that month to deal with X issue, whatever that specific issue is that has arisen that needs to be addressed. I'd say in a timely manner that demands an extra special committee of the whole meeting. It would still get advertised, still would be posted, but, and it would be announced either in one of those meetings so that it was adequate time for the public to be aware of it. But I'm really worried that if we set ourselves up for two a month plus two council meetings, that we would be right back where we are a year from now with council upset with staff because we've cancelled meetings.
So, sorry, I just didn't quite understand what you said about the policy side. So how would you be managing the policy side by having one fewer committee of the whole meetings?
So I'm referring to the policy side as council and committees and administration side as staff. So if we, right now, we've proven that we've unsatisfactorily been able to meet the policy demands of council in that we have not been able to hold regularly scheduled standing committees and actually accomplish the work that council's expectation of us is to happen. So I still think that's a problem regardless of what model we go to unless we physically reduce the committee meetings to a stage where we can put meaningful information on an agenda and not either cancel or put something on that's really not worthy. And I don't want, if we do go to a committee of the whole, I absolutely don't want us to get into a habit of, we need to put something on the agenda, so then we're back to putting stuff that should have gone directly to council and we get into the dress rehearsal routine. So that's, that's what I mean when I say policy versus administration. I guess I could have said council business versus administrative business, same sort of thing.
Okay. Director, did you have something to add?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to comment on the chief administrative officer's statements. When I was talking about the first and third Mondays as well, that probably comes out of decades of old habit and old ways of thinking, as well as looking at the current committee structure and the amount of things that we're sending to standing committees. Some of the discussion we've had tonight, though, is defining the things that would actually go to committee of the whole as to the things that would go directly to council. So that would, I think, vastly reduce the amount of things that we would expect at committee of the whole anyway. So the first Monday being the regular meeting of committee of the whole allows us to deal with the complex things that we think need more time and more consideration. Reserving the third Monday, I think, is very valuable in the sense that sometimes the meeting goes much longer than we anticipate. Sometimes the smallest things take the most time. That allows us to just adjourn the meeting to the third Monday where we pick up from there and carry on with that business and any new business that might come out of that, as well as any item that might go to council. Council feels it's much more complex than what's come out of the committee meeting, for example, and can refer it to the very next committee of the whole meeting if appropriate for us to have that more in-depth discussion again to get to the next council meeting. So having that third Monday of the month for committee of the whole for special needs or to meet certain conditions could be quite useful to council, I think.
Councilor Knoll and then the CAO.
Yes. At first, I thought two committee of the whole meetings would probably be the way we wanted to go, but thinking a little further on it, one of the things that used to come before committee of the whole and took up most of the night was planning and land use items. The advisory planning committee is now, commission is now reporting directly to council, so it won't come to committee at all. That will take a gigantic chunk out of any agenda. So I think we can probably manage it with one meeting scheduled per month.
And the CAO.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor Knoll just raised what I was going to state and I just, I'll just go a little bit further and say that probably the most complex and controversial issues that face, the council faces, not just in Callwood, but everywhere in B.C., is land use issues. And those aren't going to be hitting the committee of the whole agenda in most cases. They're going to be going to the advisory planning commission, as Councilor Knoll had stated.
So, Councilor Chong.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm also supportive of the, having the meeting on the Monday and then reserving other items on the third Monday. But I also want to say is that I don't want us to get into the habit of saying, you know, it's getting late, let's put these items for the third Monday. I really don't want to disappoint people that have come to the first Monday to get to their item, just to be there and not be able to speak about their item. So I would really like to avoid that.
Yeah. So, a commitment. Director of Administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is provided for in our procedure bylaw, which it does say our meetings will end by 10 o'clock, but with a resolution of two-thirds majority, I believe it is, it can go later. So as long as the membership is willing to go later, you absolutely can continue your meeting past 10 o'clock.
I just, a question on that, on the financial viability of that, I would like to understand what the financial implications are for going past 10 o'clock. Because sometimes, myself included, we can be more succinct when, when we really know that we have to be. And so...
And so as an agenda gets long and the hour gets late, sometimes, you know, our resolution to go past 10 is just for that last five minutes to finish up an item. And I don't think I've ever seen us put an item to, forward to another meeting when people have been here wanting to speak to it. We've, we've always, I think, done that, but maybe that should be formalized in our procedure, that we speak to that somehow, that that is our expectation, is that if you're here to speak to a matter, you will have your opportunity. And I've lost my spot, so I'm going to the next person. No, not seeing any. Anything else that you would like staff to know, or that you feel that they need to know in preparing what I believe will be a report coming to council with some suggested options?
I've heard a lot of support for Mayor Hamilton.
Well, no, I just, you know, I mean, if we need to get to the nitty gritties on this from what we're hearing, and I'll throw it out on the floor, that we staff, ask staff to prepare a report for council that would include what the layout of a committee of the whole structure, resort utilizing the first Monday of each month as a scheduled committee of the whole, and a reserve on the third Monday for the same purposes, to deal with anything that might arise or be left over, and bring us back, you know, what that might look like, and when could we get it underway and get back on track with some of the things that need to be done.
That seems like a motion. And staff happy with a motion at this point?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think we've heard a lot tonight that will help us, and I'm not, cautiously optimistic that we can bring a report back to council that will be satisfactory. In other words, we'll do our best to write something that addresses all the issues, and I think if, if it poses difficulties for council, we may have to schedule another COW. But I think we're, I think we can put something together that can address a lot of the issues that we've heard tonight, and we'll do our best to make a recommendation that we think council might be satisfied with, and if not, as I said, we'll go to another, recommend another committee of the whole to distill it down a bit more.
Director of Administration?
Just one last comment as well, is, of course, this is going to take a period of time. We start our summer recess in the middle of July, but the standing committees do still stand. We do have a lot of our staff in place now. You know, we went through a period of time where we didn't have the staffing that we needed, or we were dealing with budget deliberations. So if you do have agenda items, talk to the department head, and if there's a scheduled standing committee meeting coming up, you can have a standing committee meeting to discuss those items, so. But we'll try to whip this up as quickly as we can. It would be great if we could have it resolved before summer recess, in order to return from summer recess and perhaps be under the new program.
Great. That sounds doable. I think we are all kind of moving in the same direction. I did think of what my question was, and that was in terms of, I would like to, when the report does come forward, if it could mention what financial benefits there are to doing it this way. So I'm not asking you on the fly by the seat of your pants to tell us what it costs to go past 10 o'clock, but I think that we should know that. I think when we make a motion to go past 10 o'clock, if there's a, if there is a cost to the city, we should be aware of that. Not that it, you know, there's certainly good reasons to go beyond 10 o'clock at times, but I think we should know what the implications are. And the other question that still stands out in my mind, because we're talking about committee of the whole, I would like to, and I've heard quite literally around the table, a keen interest in keeping the public engaged and involved, and in fact, expanding that engagement. So I'd like to know how we're going to do that. So whether it's, you know, I really think that allowing a second opportunity to speak helps, because I know for myself, it gives me a chance to formulate my thoughts around a subject, especially if I'm fairly new to that subject, if I get to hear where people are coming from, and then, and put my two cents in at the end. And committee of the whole would be a very appropriate place for that to happen, because we're not, you know, the be-all and end-all in that one final swoop hurry-up night. We have time for sober second thought, and an opportunity to consider all the things that we've heard before we made our final decision. So I'm just looking around the table to make sure nobody else had any burning last things to say, and there is a motion that has been made. Any further discussion on the motion? Only need a mover, and the mover is Mayor Hamilton. And the motion is to, for staff to bring back a report on committee of the whole, regularly scheduled for the first Monday, with an alternate date set as the third Monday as required, if I got that all straight. And I will call the question, and all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Adjournment is moved by Councilor Logan. Surprise.